We're going to call this meeting, workshop meeting of the Louisville City Council to order. It is 6:00 PM. We do have a forum. First up tonight, discussion of regular agenda items and consent agenda items. So I've got Mayor Prof. Tim Meredith on the invocation. I've got Councilmember Kate on the pledges. We then have a presentation for the Community Relations and Tourism Proclamation, followed by a presentation of awards to police officers and firefighters involved in that water rescue back in November with the mother and three children. Item E1, public hearing, zone change from warehouse to light industrial. Any questions or comments? And this one has a different type of motion on there, so if you take a look at that one, we're going to move to continue that one because it has to work in parallel with the next item. I'm sorry, not with the next item, but with a future item, sorry. Next item is a public hearing regarding the short-term rentals. Our attorney would like to take us into closed for just a moment. You want to do that now, Liz?
Sure, on 551.071 consultation with the attorney.
Great, so we're going to clear the room for just a moment. Back 11:00.
...that are in place, has connections to Louisville's 25 Plan, our Sustainability Action Plan in UDC that was listed here. So we'll go through kind of each section of the criteria manual and just kind of highlight some of the significant changes to the manual. So the first section is the general drainage criteria. The big change here is the developer has to create an O&amp;M plan that's approved by staff for maintenance of their private drainage facilities or improvements to their site. This document has to be filed at the county. This will help us to hold them accountable for maintenance of these improvements. Section two, determination of storm runoff. We updated the modeling software that's allowed to be used. We have kind of had to allow it anyway because the old manual was 1988. Software's been updated many times since then. But we're going to document those changes with this chapter. A new thing is the downstream assessments process, redevelopment. There'll be a flow chart for this process. This will help us to ensure that development as it's proposed to develop, that it will minimize impacts downstream. So downstream property owners, this will be a deeper dive into what the impacts could be. Could be the water surface elevation, velocities, things of that nature. So this will probably require more properties to require stormwater detention to alleviate those concerns. We did a small change in flowing streets. In the UDC, we added a new street classification called new streets. So we established some guidelines there. We also wanted to mention fire lanes. Just mention that we want a 12-foot clear lane for the fire lanes so they're not flooded during a hundred-year storm. We did not change any criteria for our existing street types. So residential collectors, principal arterials, those are staying the same as they were. Storm drain inlets. So the issue that we, or one of the account for here was low-point inlets. So we have a low-point inlet on the street. That's where you can have flooding of the street, flooding potentially of homes. So we want to make sure that there's an overflow pathway that's designed into the subdivision for the commercial development, whatever may be applicable to try to minimize that flood risk. So the next section is for the enclosed storm drain systems. We added criteria for the outfalls to our, for the pipe drainage through head walls to the creek, to the open channels, to require a storm route designed to help minimize erosion from that discharge to the open channel. We also changed, small change to the storm sewer manholes spacing. We just set a standard of 600 feet regardless of pipe size. For open channel design, we just did a small change to the maximum slope. For urban slopes would be four to one instead of three to one. This will just help us be able to maintain it or leave it as natural as we want to. It would certainly help us with equipment if we need to use equipment on this side slope. Culvert bridge design, we left the culvert design the same as the old criteria manual. Those standards are still great. We didn't change those. We have no criteria for bridges, which is rare that we use them, but we want to at least have some standards to try to alleviate concerns upstream that we're not raising water surface elevations with our bridge designs and also minimize downstream erosion concerns. Detention facility design, our previous manual talked about just the 100-year storm event. And so what we want to do here is incorporate all types of storm events, 1, 5, 25, 15, 100 years, to look at all the storm events and make the best analysis of what type of, how big, how significant of a detention pond is needed for a development. The floodplain section, this supports, this will support our Chapter 5.5 Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance. We are, there is added criteria here or is clarification that we want to analyze the 1, 5, and 100-year storms. Those 1 in 5 storms is to look at those lower flows and that can create some significant erosion. And this is a concern where they may be filling the floodplain, reclaiming some of it that a development could do, and that would be a disturbed area. That could be an arrearsive situation during construction. And certainly at the end of construction, the grass is just getting established and that could be a concern. So we want to make sure we're thoughtful about the design of those improvements. Water quality is the big, the big change. So this is a brand-new section. This will support those long-term plans for sustainability. This will establish minimum requirements for stormwater quality so we can minimize the impact of streams, lakes, and rivers. So this will impact projects that are one acre or larger. There are guidelines on how to achieve what's in the criteria manual in the Site Development Control Guidelines that's in the OSMIR diagram. This will, that same, those same guidelines are also mentioned in the water quality practices. They're allowed to get drainage utility credits in that policy. So that could be a slight benefit to the developer to implement those. But this is a significant change from the old manual. But for us to be at a silver level, this is something we're going to have to do. And I'm going to take, hand it back over to David to discuss next.
Again, the Drainage Criteria Manual is a very technical document and usually only people that are really taking up and look at it and try to use their engineers. So we're proposing that this document be a staff-adopted document and that the staff has the ability to make changes and apply it, depending on the development and the circumstances. And so to that end, what we want to do is make revision to the UDC that basically gives the city engineer the authority to waive or modify technical requirements in the Drainage Criteria Manual. We do plan to report back to the city council if we make any substantive changes to the manual so we have some input and discussion about those. We're going to pass the consultant with developing some drawings that will illustrate some of the things that are in this manual and add it to our standard details that we provide to developers and engineers. We're going to fan the document out to the development community of developers, engineers, basically the people we deal with on a frequent basis and make sure that they've got it and understand it and obviously answer their questions and comments. We're going to provide a copy of it and it's going to be available on the city website. And then ultimately we'd want to submit, you know, by development code along with this drainage manual to the COG so they can evaluate it with regard to our status with ICWIM. And as has been mentioned, we really expect, you know, based on what we've received, we'll probably be eligible for a silver level in the ICWIM program. So with that, we're here. If we can answer any questions you have.
I have a quick question. Go back to slide number... Nine, I'm sorry.
Section nine or slide?
So the light blue is not here, but also blue indicates how close you're already being. Where's Louisville? So we're less than three, almost 13. What's our gap?
Let's see, the colonies. So Louisville is up here.
Right, I'm sorry. I see where Louisville is, but I'm trying to figure out what's our gap between where we're at today and closing. How many criteria we follow?
So right now, what they did is they evaluated all cities' criteria manuals. And they came up with this map and color-coded it accordingly. The ones that are blue have not formally submitted to council ordinance to be given a bronze, silver, or gold standard.
What I'm asking is...
We're less than three and greater than 13. We're at, I think, on the map, you can click on it. We don't have that access here. But I believe we're, I think, 12 out of 16.
Kind of that median group.
I believe is where they scored us initially. And that's the only old criteria manual. They haven't seen the new UDC or the new proposed manual.
All right, thank you. Other questions?
Just one quick question, David. Will you revise, on the last slide you have, you revise the UDC to provide the city engineer authority to waive or modify technical requirements? Can we get a report on why when that's waived?
We can. It's the way we handle alternative standards in the UDC. Very technical matters, using driveway spacing as an example. You know, the city engineer has the authority to make modifications of those requirements. So this would be a very similar type of thing.
I just want to make sure that we have, not to get into the technical weeds, but just that we know what's being changed.
Yeah, so I think when we do our annual, annually, we'll give you a report on any amendments we're making and we can just kind of summarize any of the deviations we've had too. So really, our next, our next thing will be, like David said, we'll bring a UDC amendment. And that UDC amendment will say that city councils authorizing the city engineer to promulgate and, you know, maintain this drainage criteria manual.
And yeah, I'm not suggesting that we get involved in that process in any way, just so that we know what's going on for ourselves.
So are we officially adopting this now or are we using this now?
Not yet, no. So we have to bring it back on ordinance to the UDC to basically approve it. We will get working on that as soon as...
But in the meantime, can developers follow this?
Yeah, they can. We would rather they follow that than what we've got, so.
Right, right.
I've got just two concerns, and I'm sure staff will address them. One is, we kind of have a tragedy to comments thing going on here. I look at all the cities that drain into us and have for many years, and they're developing like crazy, and we're getting that impact now. But they don't have any blue. And so we're going to be raising the costs on development in Louisville to accommodate for whether or not they do anything. So I just, I want to be very cognizant of, we need to make it easy for developers to make that transition and not put another barrier to sprawl and other stuff. That's, I think, my biggest concern on this is just, let's be really aware of, we don't need to put another hurdle in front of developers to redevelop in Louisville, especially when we have neighbors that may or may not be taking this on and we're seeing those downstream impacts. So that's, I think, my biggest, biggest issue with this is just making sure that we're doing it for the right reasons and that we're not putting an undue burden on the development side of the world because I need that redevelopment.
I have a comment regarding that. Because I will say, I don't know how old this map is, but I think it's maybe a little bit outdated because I know Frisco has implemented some criteria for ICWIM BMPs that are much more stringent than what we're talking about here. So, and they're...
They're silver. They're actually...
Is that silver? Okay, so silver is higher.
Yeah.
That's better than, okay.
That's the best. That's the best unless you pay money into it.
Okay, so I was, all right, so the cities that were...
There's something that doesn't sound far right.
The cities that are draining into us are silver.
No, they're white. Denton and Corinth are silver, but there's a bunch of cities that are not even...
Okay, and then there's the colony that's white.
Colony doesn't really...
Okay, never mind, never mind. Scratch my comment. I see what you're saying.
Got it?
Yeah.
Cool. That's my biggest concern, but I appreciate that. And of course, I would much rather an engineer be looking at this, but what I don't want is to create a little pocket to fight them back there that says, "Oh, we're just going to do whatever the heck we want." I hear that kind of struggle with development in other cities. This is one of those that could happen. Not under this regime, would never happen under the team we have today, but sometime in the future. Keep an eye that there's some way that council can know what's going on.
Absolutely. Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Item C, ADA Transition Plans. We have Aaron Urick with Kim Lee Horn to present. Aaron, I hope I got that last name right.
You thought that was exciting.
Bring it on.
My name is Chris Presley. I'm with the Facilities ADA Compliance Supervisor. Back in 2022, the city of Louisville started updating our ADA Transition Plan. So we did a request for qualifications, and Kim Lee Horn emerged as the best consultant to help us do that with their many transition plans that they've helped with, other municipalities. So they are here to help us, me, to help us have the Americans with Disabilities Act and to follow any federal guidelines that go along with that. So we're very lucky to have them. We have Aaron Urick with Kim Lee Horn, and we have Kristi Avalos with Accessology, who is helping out as well. And tonight, we're just going to give you an update on where we're at with our transition plan and what the mayor and city council can expect in the coming months. Thank you very much.
I was told I could sit here, so please excuse me.
So in a fancy chair.
Really quickly, if I could, while Aaron gets settled in, I want to embarrass Chris, if I can. So when you're new director, the first thing you do is kind of figure out who your go-to people are. Very early on, Chris was one of those people for me. Very early on, Chris was one of those people for me and I just wanted to announce to everyone that he is now official, we're promoting him to be our new manager of public services over Cleveland.
Well, thank you all for the opportunity tonight to update you on our ADA Transition Plan project. So one of the things we did want to make sure that everyone was aware of is that the ADA Transition Plan is a master plan for accessibility. It's a living document, it will never fully be completely finished, and it is something that will need to be updated regularly as implementation moves forward. So tonight, we're going to talk about the importance of the ADA Transition Plan and the self-evaluation, what we did during this first phase, as well as the potential adoption of the accessibility guidelines for pedestrian facilities in the public rightsway, also known as PROAG. And we'll also be talking about what the next steps are. So the ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan is something that is required by law. Specifically, under Title II is where the requirements for self-evaluation and transition plan come from. And not only is it the right thing to do to make sure that all of your programs, services, and activities, as well as facilities, are accessible to everyone who may have a disability, it is also going to result in a failure to receive federal and state funding, potentially, depending on what you're applying for. We do know that TechDOT is surveying local municipalities to understand the current status of their self-evaluation and transition plan. And then it's also possible that you could have a settlement agreement with the Department of Justice. And the thing to remember there is that they can dictate the timeline in which all facilities and programs, services, and activities need to be brought into compliance instead of the city being able to dictate that timeline for themselves. And then lastly, there can also be private lawsuits. We've seen that particularly in the public rightsway where someone doesn't even have to come into the buildings to be able to see what may potentially be out of compliance. So it's very great that the city is taking a proactive approach to this and making sure that they know exactly what needs to be fixed and what will be done to complete the implementation of those barrier removals. And I did want to remind everyone that the Americans with Disabilities Act is a civil rights law, so we're just making sure that individuals with disabilities have the same equal access to the city's programs, services, and activities and making sure that everything is accessible just the same way it is for someone who does not have a disability. Now, there are five titles of the ADA, they're up on the slide here, but Title I relates specifically to employment. Title II is state and local governments, and I mentioned that's where the requirement for the self-evaluation and transition plan comes from. There's also Title III, which is places of public accommodation that may still be within the city of Lewisville but is not specifically owned or operated by the city, so retail centers, restaurants, anything like that. Title IV is for telecommunications. And then Title V is miscellaneous, but I did want to point out that this is where the U.S. Access Board was given the authority to develop guidelines for accessibility design and construction. And so we'll talk more about that related to PROAG adoption at the end of the presentation. So there are several Title II requirements, and on the next couple of slides, we'll talk about what those are and how we completed those in relationship to this initial phase as well as maintenance phases coming up. So the administrative requirements are the first three bullets that you'll see there, and that's to provide notice to the public about what the ADA says the city is required to do, lets them know how they can request accommodations to participate in any cities, city programs, services, or activities. And then also has the contact information for the ADA coordinator, who's going to be the designated city employee to oversee Title II compliance. And then the last administrative item is to adopt and publish a Title II grievance procedure so that if someone from the public does have a concern, they know the process in which they would need to follow to get that concern addressed, as well as the timelines that would go into that. And then a specific requirement is also to provide public input for the self-evaluation process as well as the transition planning process. And so we'll discuss later on how it was that we got that input for this particular And then the transition plan itself, this is really where the documentation part is going to come into play. And so identifying any physical barriers to access that may prohibit someone from gaining access to the programs, services, and activities were identified for those facilities that were evaluated. And we also identified the methods that will be used to remediate those barriers, so specifically the standards that you would want to reference in doing the updated design. And then the schedule is something that we're working with staff on to understand how long it will take to implement the barrier removal. And then also the office that's responsible for the implementation of the plan. We want this to be something that's used in your annual budgeting process and is used as projects are implemented, so we don't want it to be something that remains static. We want it to be, to be used regularly. And then during the maintenance phases beyond this phase, really looking at evaluating current city policies, services, and practices, and if there's any modifications that are needed to those, looking at how to bring them into compliance. The self-evaluation is required to be kept on file for at least three years after completion. And again, that just goes back to the documentation side of things, making sure that staff has a record of what's been completed. But there is an ongoing obligation to make sure that each service, program, and activity is operated so that it's readily accessible to individuals with disabilities. And so helping staff understand what that's going to take as new programs come online or as people have special requests for those programs, for participation in those programs. And then specifically, there is a requirement that a schedule for providing curb ramps be provided, and so that's something that staff is actively working on determining the best way to do that. And then lastly, is just maintaining that transition plan. So again, this is a living document, we want to make sure that it gets used regularly and is also updated regularly. So there have been some efforts that the city has documented to date. In 1992 and 1993, there was the original ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan that was developed. And as part of that, there was a comprehensive review of city policies and practices, but a lot has changed since then. And so that's why it's going to be important that the current policies and practices get looked at and are maintained. There's also some other administrative items that were taken care of as well as evaluating facilities at that time. But while there has been strides towards compliance, it hasn't fully made sure that the city is compliant with Title II of the ADA. In 2010, there was also documentation related to the public rightsway, so a curb cut retrofit plan was put in place to identify locations where curb ramps were needed. And in addition to that, there was also a Parks ADA compliance study done for 23 boroughs in 2010.
Could I just jump in? That slide makes it look like we haven't done anything since 2010. That's not true. The city does things all the time to address issues. It's just those are the documented things through studies and such.
Thanks for jumping in there. So during this current phase, we did look at a select number of facilities. We also developed a web application that, we'll show you a quick demo here at the end. We looked at public rightsway documentation. So in addition to that curb cut study, what had been done to date and then also what needs to be done moving forward and really looking at what is that action plan? And then we also looked at the current transition plan that was developed in 1992 and 1993, made reference to that, and then updated the plan to account for all the activities that the city has done since 1992. So to the point that was just made, we're making sure that everything is documented in a single location, so staff is well aware of what's happened. And then finally, the public, public input, which I'll talk about at the end. So this slide summarizes all the facilities that we evaluated in this current phase. There were some facilities that were documented previously and we wanted to understand, could we use those previous evaluations to fully update the transition plan, including the location of those barriers and the associated costs? So through that exercise, you will potentially see that there were some facilities that were reevaluated. And what we did find is that it was difficult to determine the location of things that had been completed because the documentation was not there. So that's really a part of this process, is really helping to update that documentation and make sure that it's maintained over time so that you guys know exactly what needs to be evaluated and exactly what needs to be implemented and what barriers have been removed. And then for the public rightsway, we did want to note that staff is currently investigating different technology solutions to understand the best path forward for completing those different evaluations.
Siri, if you have a demo, we are going to run out of time based on the number of slides that you have, so I don't know if there's a way that we can work through that.
It was going to be a 30-second demo, but I can also speak from the slide.
Thank you.
And then for the facility observations, these are just some of the general things that we found. This does not cover everything comprehensively, but just to look at some of the photos, a lot of the pedestrian access routes, there were level changes where it created a tripping hazard, seen in the photo on the left. If there were amenities like a bench, there were missing accessible routes so that someone that was using a mobility device would not be able to access that bench or sit next to a companion that wanted to also be using that bench at the same time. For doors, there was a lack of clearance on the pool side as required for the design standards. And then if there are countertops, they're required to have a lowered section, so someone who is of short stature or using a wheelchair, they're able to roll up or use that counter in the same way someone who was able to stand up to that full countertop height would be able to use the counter. And then the lavatories, not having enough space in the accessible stalls so that someone can maneuver as much. And then examples of parts that need to be at a particular reach range, the example of the coat hook there being installed greater than 48 inches. For the web application development, like you said, I'll go ahead and skip over the demo, but what we have done, this is not city of Lewisville, so please disregard the cost for the purpose of this. But what we're trying to show here is that once all the public rightsway are evaluated and then also the buildings and the parks, all of this is going to amount to a massive amount of data. And we recognize that staff needs to be able to use this data to make decisions on budgeting and implementation and to also be able to incorporate these accessibility challenges within the scope of existing projects. So staff is going to be able to filter down by facility type, by potential area, so if you wanted to take a lasso around a particular neighborhood, it would dynamically update the costs associated with that sidewalk, all the curb ramps. If there were any other facilities like parks or buildings in that same area that you wanted to look at, all the costs on the side will update for whatever your particular selection is. And then you can also update the database as is shown on the graphs on the left with the implementation here. So if you wanted to track your progress and monitor your status during implementation, this dashboard is going to be a great tool for staff to be able to do that, and you guys have complete control over this. This dashboard is yours to use throughout the implementation process that I'm moving forward. For the public rightsway documentation, I mentioned the curb cut retrofit plan. There's also active improvements being made to sidewalks and alleyways specifically for accessibility. And really, we're helping staff document what needs to happen next with the updates to the public rightsway documentation. For public outreach, we have already had one meeting in late 2023 where we had public input given on how the city is doing regarding accessibility in general. But we are also having another meeting next week. We hope to get the public out there to continue to provide input, to help facilitate input, though we've also developed an online survey. It has questions about all the city facilities as well as programs, services, and activities. So during that public meeting, we'll be going over some of the results of that, but we also hope to continue to get input as we finalize the transition plan. And then I mentioned earlier on those Title II requirements for the transition plan itself. So as part of this initial phase, we have addressed those Title II requirements, so all the administrative items I mentioned, and then also helping staff understand prioritization criteria and what needs to be done over the next several years as implementation moves forward. This is just the typical master planning process, so that is the one thing we wanted to let staff know is important. So this is just step one. Next is going to be design, and then the actual opinion of probable construction costs being developed as part of the design. And then finally, construction, and then updates to the transition plan. So before I show the next slide with the planning level cost estimates, I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of where we were in the process. And so this table shows the costs, the planning level costs that were developed for just what was evaluated in this phase. These are for accessibility improvements only and don't include costs for overhead or for administration or mobilization of projects. It's strictly for the labor and the cost of materials to get these things completed. The implementation schedule is going to be based on several factors. This particular order of elements or the factors that you see listed is not the order in which you're going to be considering these. They all can be looked at, and this is something that can change on a year-to-year basis, and it's completely up to the city on how you want to implement your plan. We're just providing some options for you and providing guidance on how that could potentially be done. And then lastly, for the public rightsway accessibility guidelines, in 2023, there was a final rule that was put out by the U.S. Access Board for these guidelines specific to pedestrian facilities in the public rightsway. Over the past 23 years or so, this has been a document that has been in development, has been through several iterations of public comment and update because of that. And once these guidelines are adopted into law, they will become an enforceable standard by the Department of Justice and Department of Transportation. That being said, they will only be enforceable at the federal level, and it's advisable to keep the federal, federal government out of the city's business. We want you guys to be able to implement and enforce PROAG at the city level, and accordingly, we would recommend that the city adopt PROAG to be able to do so. And there is an example of the Lewisville Unified Development Code where the manual on uniform traffic control devices was adopted, and we would recommend a similar statement be put in there for PROAG. Our next steps are to have the public meeting I mentioned next week, finalize the transition plan by incorporating some of that public input, and then we hope to come back to council for approval of the plan and then also potential PROAG adoption. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I have a quick question. Can you go back to slide 45, please? I'll make sure to stick what we're seeing here.
Patrick, you may just need to... Oh, there we go.
What's line?
Forty-five.
This is not my question.
Okay, you know what? I'll just ask you a question. We're down like, we're down like four phases. And if slide 45 had four or $500,000 associated, you got just for phase one?
Correct, so those implementation costs are for only for the facilities that have been evaluated in this update.
So what you'll see is when we get into budget season, you're going to start seeing money, when we talk about putting money down for infrastructure, part of that's going to have to be reflected of some of these we're phasing in. And this is going to be an ongoing thing, like this isn't just phase one and we check off the list. As soon as we finish one item on phase one, we'll have more added to the list.
Slide 35.
Yeah, slide 35.
Thank you. Any questions?
No questions? That's all we have for workshop, so we'll go ahead and break, and we will reconvene It's 7:00, and we have, this meeting of the Lewisville City Council will be called to order. We do have a quorum. First up on the agenda, we have our invocation with our mayor pro tem, William Meredith.
Please join me in a moment of silent contemplation. Thank you.
Councilor Kate.
Join me in the pledge to our flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
So first up, we have a proclamation. Mr. Conkey, would you mind? Since it's for you and your team.
Do you want to?
Absolutely. They're not, they're not moving.
We're behind the camera.
Well, I love that you guys, you know, wrote this up, and like, I'm like, James, if you write this up, that means you got to be under the camera. So, you know, so, folks, I would love to tell you that people just completely lock in and pay attention to every single word that's said by every council member and every mayor and every city manager, but the reality is, they don't. The people that actually get the word out to the community and make it happen are right here with me, and we'd like to recognize them for all of what they do, because quite frankly, folks, and if you've been paying any attention to today's media nonsense, quite frankly, that's been going on with the primary elections, these folks right here are the source of truth. Because I don't know about you, but everything I'm saying, I'm just defaulting to. That's a lie until, until I am proven otherwise, but that's not the case with our public communicators. So whereas the role of government communication professionals is to inform, educate, and engage their communities, and whereas robust communication in government creates trust and inspires residents to take action and be involved, and whereas government communications create relationships and calls to action, build awareness and understanding through storytelling, engage and foster engagement on civic issues, and use all channels to include people in critical decisions, and whereas it is essential to have strong communications in government because it is a foundational element of a living, of living in a democracy where citizens have their freedom to make their voices heard. And whereas the City of Louisville is proud and has deep gratitude and recognition for government communicators' professionalism, dedication, hard work, commitment, enthusiasm, and sacrifice, now therefore I, TJ Gilmore, Mayor of Louisville, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim February 24th, 2024, as Government Communicators Day in Louisville, Texas, and urge all residents to observe the occasion with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Let's give these folks a hand. So, so what is the appropriate way?
Thank you, Mayor. Before they head back into the shadows, we have Jamie and Matt, and Melinda, and Kenice and Stephen. This is the core of our communication team, although we have 1,000 communicators working for the city. And Mayor, Council, City Management, a lot of credit goes to the leadership of the city for giving us good stories to tell, and it is our pleasure to share those as often as we can. So thank you.
You need a photo?
Wait. Nope.
Oh.
One more time. Guess we ought to move in a little closer.
Make it look official. Yay!
Are you going to take a video? We can do a boomerang, but how are we going to make that work?
She was insistent upon the vertical picture.
I do have David Frieser and Major Durham here from Salvation Army. Would you all mind coming up here for just a moment? They have a small presentation. We have, I guess, the results of the Mayor's Red Kettle Challenge Award from Christmas time. Hey, Charlotte, would you mind representing Highland Village? Would you mind coming on up here?
Yeah.
You're good? Okay.
I think Mayor TJ might have something to say about that. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Major Marion Durham, and I'm one of the core officers of the Salvation Army here in Louisville. And tonight, I'm accompanied by my colleague, David Fieser, who is our development specialist for Denton and Collin Counties. So we are here tonight to thank you, Mayor TJ Gilmore, and all of our city leaders for participating in the 2023 Red Kettle Challenge. And not just Red Kettle, but the Mayor's Red Kettle Challenge. And your leadership inspired three other mayors to participate in the challenge, the Flower Mound Mayor, Derek France, Bartonville Mayor, Jaclyn Carrington, and Highland Village Mayor, Daniel Jaworski. Now, we are pleased to give to you tonight this certificate of appreciation and this very special bell engraved... Let me give it a ring-a-ding. Although you're a pro now.
This is, this is pretty good.
You could ring it, right? We wanted to thank you for the challenge that you accepted and extended to others because this, the funds for the Salvation Army's Red Kettle helps our programs throughout the whole year. It's not just a Christmas program. We have a lot of instability in families and poverty and homelessness and addiction. So would you like to announce what you've raised? Let's do that. All of the efforts combined for the Louisville team raised...
2024.
Yay! $2,024. $1,363 was raised through the bell ringing, 661 through your virtual Red Kettle Online. And you know what? This placed you first above all the other mayors in the Red Kettle Challenge.
I got it. I got this one. Mayor, Charlotte's coming for me. I can see it now.
Now, we do owe you a debt of gratitude because your efforts helped inspire four mayoral teams, which gave us a combined effort of $5,391 in donations. So thank you so much. We really, really appreciate all your efforts. Let me just tell you a quick story about where that money goes.
Okay.
All right? There's an elderly couple, Sam and Donna, who are respectively 84 and 83 years old. They live here in our community on a fixed income. Donna's prescriptions had begun very costly, and Sam was very, very worried about that, and he was having to choose between prescriptions and paying other bills, including buying their groceries. So he came to the Salvation Army because he was afraid their utilities were going to get cut off. So they met with our case management specialist at the Salvation Army, and she helped Sam and Donna benefit from several of our resources. They received food from our food pantry, also utility and prescription assistance. And most of all, they received hope because they knew that they were not going to have their lights cut off and that they wouldn't have to make those tough decisions between prescriptions and food anymore. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
We appreciate you so much. God bless you.
And, oh, we got to get a picture? Okay.
Yes.
Put that bell in there.
Let's hold up your certificate, too.
We got that, too? Awesome.
All right.
Well, and this is, this is an award for the community. It's not just me. We have lots of mayors. I may have inspired four, but we have a tremendous amount of mayors in Denton County specifically that all participated that day. And so that was just one day where we could kind of spike the ball and, and give a little extra hope. So I appreciate it, and I'm always excited to participate, and it's, it's great to see the community come out and give that time of year.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, you know, when you look out from this way out into here, it's pretty easy to tell, we've got at least two big things to talk about tonight. And one of those happens to be a presentation of awards to our police officers and firefighters that were involved in a water rescue on November 17th, 2023. And I would like to invite up Police Chief Brooke Rollins and Fire Chief Mark McNeil to present the awards.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We look forward to this opportunity to brag a little bit about our police officers and firefighters and tell you about a particularly intense call. So would our firefighters and police officers that were involved in this call come ahead and come to the front for us? So as they come forward, I'm going to tell you a little bit about this call. So on November 17th, 2023, Louisville Police and Fire Departments responded to a call for a vehicle that had driven in the water. Initial reports were that there were three people in this vehicle, and it was about 60 feet offshore. So our Engine 5 and Medic 5 arrived on scene, and they had three people in the water, as we said, about 60 feet offshore. We had our firefighters, Jacob Delashaw, Joseph Sewell immediately entered the water, and then Cooper Hudson, firefighter Cooper Hudson, entered right behind them, dragging a rope with him. So these gentlemen entered the water quickly in their duty uniforms without any safety or flotation devices on. So firefighter Delashaw made, was able to grab the mother who was holding one of the children, and firefighter Sewell was able to grab the other child that was visible. And so they were able to get the rope that Cooper Hudson had taken out to them, and we had officers, police officers on the shore along with firefighters that pulled them to the shore. At this time, we'd received word that there was another victim, another child in the water. And so Cooper Hudson swam around, he saw a backpack floating, so he swam to that backpack, found a child attached to the backpack floating underwater. So he was able to grab that child and come to shore. So the child that the mother was holding and the child that was wearing the backpack, both were in cardiac arrest when they arrived on shore. Having one child in a cardiac arrest is bad enough, but when you have two, it takes a lot of hands, and so this is where the teamwork from both police and fire came into, to play. And so police officers Fleming and Edge began chest compressions while fire department members prepared supplies and other equipment, working as a team. Then other officers and firefighters helped carry the equipment, the children, up to the ambulance. Because the speed at which this happened, the two critical children were transported in one medic, and two of our swimmers had to continue care and went to the hospital with them. So our firefighters and police officers, they work very well each day, but because of the skill level, the trust, and the teamwork of the men and women that are up here, all four people on this call made a complete recovery. Our police officers and firefighters serve with honor every day, but incidents like this show how absolutely amazing they are. So our firefighters, we had our awards banquet Friday night, and they have already received their awards, but I'm going to call out what they were given. So Jacob Delashaw, Joseph Sewell, and Cooper Hudson, for their quick action in entering the water and making the rescue, received our award of merit. That's the fire department's second highest award. Our other crew members on scene all received a word of commendations for their actions, and this is on shore and in transport, and their work helped contribute to the successful outcome of this call. So that's Battalion Chief Chris Moss, Captain Jason McMinn, Captain Kelly Sanford, Captain Greg Cunningham, Driver Engineer John Whitner, Captain Brian Bartow, Driver Engineer Matt Luttrell, Firefighter Paramedic Jace Chisholm, Firefighter Paramedic Harrison Kent, Firefighter Paramedic Scott Moody, Firefighter Paramedic David McCurley, Firefighter EMT Nicholas Richards, Firefighter EMT Tyrone Pratcher, Captain Clay Martin, Driver Engineer Colton Span, Firefighter Paramedic Darrell Twiner, Firefighter Paramedic Ricky Rankin, and Firefighter Paramedic Justin Oliver, Captain H. Bassinger, Driver Engineer Casey Selby, Firefighter Paramedic Tyler Hunt, Firefighter EMT Christian Rodriguez, and finally, Firefighter Paramedic Ron Paris and Firefighter Paramedic Drew Murphy. As you can see, this is a labor-intensive thing on our side. Gentlemen, congratulations, and thank you for your work. Our police officers have not received their awards, so tonight, Chief Rollins will be presenting two different awards. So first off, we have a life-saving award, and this goes to Officer James Fleming and Officer Gary Edge for initiating CPR on scene. This quick action allowed our paramedics to get set up for advanced patient care and played an important role in the full recovery of these two children. And next, Chief Rollins will be presenting a letter of commendation to several officers, and this is for their work on scene in pulling the firefighters and victims to the shore with the rope and then assisting on shore with patient care and moving equipment and patients. Their assistance helped ensure a quick removal and a transport, which played an important part in this successful outcome. And this goes to Officer Brian Eby, Kevon Milton, Calista Kelly, Kip Fosky, and Rick Chandler. Chief Rollins, would you like to say anything?
No, nothing more beyond than what the chief already pointed out. This is amazing teamwork. This many people contributed to the life of four of our citizens who now get to go on with the rest of theirs, so I echo everything Chief McNeil said. Very well done to everybody here. Thank you very much.
they work together and how much they work as one functional team. Too often, I see in the news where that doesn't work as smoothly in other cities, and I'm, we're just blessed that we have an amazing, amazing public safety department all the All right. Item E, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change request from Warehouse District to Light Industrial District on 1.029 acres being a portion of Riverview Industrial Park, Block A, Lot 11R1, located on the south side of Stonewall Drive, approximately 200 feet west of Huffines Boulevard. As requested by Paul Bartel, Half Associates Incorporated, on behalf of Prologis Exchange, TX 2004 LLV, the property owner, 23-12-18-Z. In 2011, the property was rezoned from Light Industrial District to Warehouse District for a proposed storage facility which was never built. The applicant is requesting a zone change from Warehouse District back to Light Industrial District to facilitate the development of a business park. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, five to nothing, of the request on February 6th, 2024. Public hearings to remove a deed restriction limiting the use of the property are scheduled for the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council on February 20th, 2024, and March 4th, 2024, respectively. In order to consider both requests at the same meeting, staff recommends that the public hearing for the zone change be continued to the March 4th, 2024 City Council meeting. It's recommended that the City Council continue the public hearing to the March 4th, 2024 City Council meeting. We do have Mr. Richard Lutke, our Planning Director, available for questions, and we do have a public hearing on it, which is now open. We do have a request, well, actually, he's, he's available for questions, which is Mr. Paul Bartel. He's representing Half Associates on behalf of Prologis Exchange, so if there are any Council, if there's no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Are we moving to close the public hearing, or the...
Counselor Jones?
Are we moving to close the public hearing?
We would need to move to continue this one.
Gotcha. So I move to continue the public hearing to March 4th, 2024 City Council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you please vote. Motion to continue passes unanimously. Item two, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 7.2, allowed uses by district of Volume 2 of the Louisville City Code, known as the Unified Development Code, by adding Section 7.2.1.5 interim prohibition on short-term rentals of dwelling units. This ordinance amends the Unified Development Code, UDC, to establish a one-year temporary prohibition on new short-term rentals of dwelling units under the permitting process adopted on January 8th, 2024, can be established and initial results evaluated. Existing short-term rentals may continue to operate per the nonconformity section of the UDC.
Greater Lewisville Association of Realtors. As you know, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, the Association of Realtors, we always are fighting to defend property rights, which is what we feel is one of the strongest things that we can do. Here to talk to you tonight a little bit about the expectations and things that we think would be good ideas. Realize that this may not be the popular opinion, but what we want to make sure that we do is that we consider all aspects of infringing on people's property rights, whether that's with short-term rentals or not. Some of the questions that we think need to be considered when taking this into account is the actual percentage of properties that we're talking about for short-term rentals. We think that's a fairly small percentage of actual properties here in Lewisville. The problems that we're trying to solve, and this is something, of course, nationwide, it's not just here in Lewisville. We realize as the National Association of Realtors, Texas Association of Realtors, that this is conversation being had in many places. But the symptoms are typically the same. It's noise, it's trash, it's parties. And what we've found in almost all locations is that the cities already have ordinances in place to handle most of those items. And so adding another layer of regulation on top of that is not something that we support. Things that we think need to be looked at too, as far as being studied, are what the number of calls to these residences are versus calls to a standard residence, an actual homeowner, or compared to a long-term rental. Where we're isolating specifics on the length of time that these properties are being regulated or that are being rented, excuse me, you kind of need to look at both sides of that compared to a standard property with a longer-term rental, excuse me, if there's a higher percentage or not. And we don't think that there is. There traditionally, in most places, that's been the case. The other that we always try to point out is, the concern is that you have out-of-state owners, you have these big corporations that are buying these properties. We've found through the different studies that it's typically the majority are locally owned and there are a lot of times there are mom and pop who are just trying to increase their income and supplement. I think one of the biggest things that's being talked about, at least with the Association of Realtors, is the term, short-term. So making the decisions on what's considered short-term is, creates an issue in a lot of different aspects as well, because you have situations where if I have a client who is an executive, who's a corporate relocation, who needs a three-month lease, well, now that's being prohibited under the six-month restrictions. Same with a leaseback, if I have a seller that needs a three-day to 10-day leaseback, is that going to be something that's factored in? In other areas, those have been conversations that have come up and created situations that we want to talk about. I think really the big thing for us is just that Realtors, and I'm just going to read this so I don't get it wrong. Realtors, we represent property owners and we always advocate for our communities and property rights. Our goal is to be a partner in figuring out the best pathway forward with rental housing throughout the city and to help come up with a realistic solution that's not based on a lot of social media hype and that works for all property owners in the city. Thank you for your time and feel free to reach out to us. As you know, we're available and happy to try to come up with some good solutions for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
I'm sorry, I have one question before you go. It's over here.
Oh, yes.
So you'd mentioned that the majority are mom and pop owners. Is that a stat somewhere? Is that your opinion?
No, that's a stat from the National Association of Realtors. I don't have it in front of me, but I could find that for you and get that out through...
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Brent, any of that data that you can send our way?
Yeah.
That'd be wonderful.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Next, for five minutes, we have Ms. Song Wu. I'm sorry, Mr. Song Wu?
Yes.
And if you could please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Song, first name Song, last name Wu. I'm a plan of residence. I have placed a 1035 scenic in Lewisville as my short-term rental. So as the owner of short-term rental, I just want to give you an example of who are my guests. Actually, just in the past weekend, my guest was from my neighbor. The neighbor, they have the family event, they have a lot of their guests, so they put, placed some of their guests on their home, but not enough, so they placed the rest guests to my home. So in that, in this sense, I can say I'm representing my neighbor, not a short-term rental owner, right? So, and also in many cases, my guests are also from his neighbor. For example, they want to do the renovation of their home, they need a temporary living. They don't want a lease. So my question is, yeah, I support we need some regulations, whatever, to make things going smoothly, but if you talk about interim ban or long-term ban, I think there's a fundamental question is what kind of guests you are banning for. So how do you distinguish who are the guests allowed, who are the guests not allowed? Just in my recent case, the guests lived in his own, in my, in the residence house, he allowed, and in the, live in the same group, guys live in the short-term rental house are not allowed. So that's kind of some fundamental questions you need to deal with before talking about bans of those people. Those are peoples, right? Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. Ms. Ainsley Stelling?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I want to start off tonight a little bit differently. I'm going to start off with a story. Eight years ago, I was put on a software project with my company to replace our old DOS-based record-keeping system and to migrate into a new web-based software system. The project, I mean, this project launched us eons ahead of our competitors, but it took a long time. We launched it on April of 2021. It was a success when you looked at it from the outside, but what people didn't see is the seven years that it took to data prep a DOS data entity into a web-based data entity. It wasn't a one-for-one. So we planned and we practiced and we tried to do everything we could to be prepared for a successful, perfect launch of this software. But it didn't matter how much we did that, because we could only capture the 80%. There's no way we could accommodate 100% without adding substantial time and money to the project. We had to rip the Band-Aid off. We couldn't let perfection stand in the way of progress. Since go live almost three years ago, we have been fighting fires of that 20% remaining, adjusting processes, procedures, fixing software issues. The story is not unique, as it occurs almost every day in every other aspect of life. You can only plan so much, but until you release it, you will never know how well it works. I don't feel it is safe to assume that the city's STR ordinance, when launched in July, will go off without a hitch. Just as with my software project, adjustments and tweaks will probably need to be made. The temporary ban ensures that the city has breathing room to take a step back and ensure that the ordinance is accomplishing all it was set out to do. A set population will aid in the data collection, review, implementation of those necessary adjustments. With surrounding cities banning short-term rentals in single-family neighborhoods, we cannot assume Lewisville that will remain unaffected. Let's give city staff and residents time to review, troubleshoot and solution that unknown 20% without a varying short-term rental population to contend with. As always, thank you.
I have a question for you, Ms. Stelling. So I see you have shirts that have been printed up and some other costs associated with what you guys are doing.
Yes, sir.
Who finances you?
We do.
It's all self-financed?
It's all personal funding.
There's no hotel lobby? There's no other organization?
No. There's actually hotels that are getting into the short-term rental market, ironically. So no, this is all grassroots.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stelling. Jeff Woods? Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Jeff Woods, 1001 Forest Park Drive, Lewisville, Texas. Good evening, Mayor, Council and City Staff. It has been my observation when topics or ordinances are presented before you that it is common for each council member to share their thoughts and opinions. And truly, it is invaluable to hear your perspectives and the insight from each member of this group, as well as the public in attendance, to gain a full picture of the issue or topic at hand. Take, for example, the recent debate around short-term rentals. We, the residents, presented substantial amounts of data highlighting the negative impact short-term rentals have on single-family neighborhoods. These were not our feelings or opinions, but facts and university studies that supported the sentiments of the residents surrounding STR neighborhood impacts, as it is a global topic and not just a local one. The Lewisville City Short-Term Rental Survey responses also highlighted this. Number one, 77% of respondents agreeing with the statement that short-term rentals should be banned from single-family neighborhoods. And number two, 84% of the respondents agreeing the short-term rentals negatively of impact to the neighborhoods. Despite this, the decision was made to permit short-term rentals. But I am very well-versed of the legal concerns surrounding the city's ultimate decision to permit STR in single-family neighborhoods. However, the simplest solution may not be the best long-term solution. My personal daily prayers for you, Mr. Mayor, council members and the city staff is this. God, I am grateful that we have leaders that will listen to us. Please be with our city officials as they weigh the pros and cons of each issue at hand. Give them wisdom to do what is fair and just. Father, I also ask that you give our leaders courage and strength so that even when it's hard, they would continue to boldly represent the constituents' needs and those of the most vulnerable. Amen. In closing, my crest is simply this: The decisions are not influenced by personal agendas, interests, opinions, beliefs or finances, but be in the best interest of the residents represented. And it'd be your desire to represent the people and be the voice of the people that elected you to this position of public office. And lastly, that you please don't lose that desire to publicly serve the residents of Lewisville first and foremost. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tiago?
Tiago Raell, 1300 Winnipeg Drive, Lewisville, Texas, 75077. Good night, y'all. It's a great honor to be here. I was here on the first time, very first session you guys had. I knew it was a hot topic. I represent only one house here in Lewisville. I was blessed enough to buy my own house, my very first home in Lewisville. I admire the city, admire all the support staff for helping all the residents to be a better place to be. And now I own a house which became a rental property, which is a corporate leasing. So most of the times, I see the residents complaining about a diversity of problems and we see most of the problems are coming in the short-term, two, three, four days, that people that come in and come out and they don't really care about the city not much. The problem that we encounter is that some people that do the short-term, they don't do the 30 days unless, they do more than 30 days. So we need to divide what is a short-term and what is a midterm, because what we provide is a corporate leasing. A lot of people here from Lewisville area, Flower Mount, Highland Village, they have insurance displacement, like water losses, fire, they're looking for a house and they want to be in the city, they don't want to go to another city, and they look for a house like ours. They provide the safety for the family, good housing, furnishing. We offer different services that mostly a hotel will not offer. And the problem is that when we come down with extra layers of regulations under the 30 days, we're not providing or accommodating services for Lewisville residents. And what we see here, the families are complaining, is that whenever people go around the lake, which is a party town or maybe a place to be, a lot of people, they come, they think it's more like a hotel, they can do things that normally you would not do it, but I care for my family, I come for my, I care for my child, I care for my elderly neighbor. So the problem is, a lot of people are coming here with the idea that they will stay here for three days and then they're leaving and they don't care much of left-in behind. So it seems that, it seems the problem that we're having, it's more on the shorter term, which is 30 days unless, as opposed to the corporate leasing, which is providing service for our own city here. I participate with the Little Elm City as well, which I have a friend of there, and the same problem that Little Elm was having with the lake houses, a lot of people coming in, moving out. So what they're starting doing is that before 30 days, they consider it a short-term rental. Anything over 30 days, it goes to the corporate leasing. And normally the corporate leasing, the ones I've seen, I don't know all of them, but the corporate leasing seems that it's operated by some property management and some companies out of the state. And they're, they have to keep well-regulated to the highest standard to keep up with the inflow of people. So they don't want to bring bad reputation to the short-term, because if that happens, the owners and the residents keep calling the city and they will shut them down. So my concern is the same concern that people have, people parking the street, leaving the trash behind, you know, not being a safe place on the streets when they have little kids or elderly people. But I think if we, as a residents here, we let the owners know, or even the neighbors know, hey, we operate, excuse me, we operate in this as a corporate leasing or short-term leasing, we have regulations to abide by and we enforce those regulations, which there's plenty of them enforced. I don't think we need to be extra over-regulated in the industry, but at least the city know that we operating with the standards that the city wants us to operate, which is a good thing for all of us too, because then we can separate the bad people or the people that don't care much about the residents in the city, as opposed to the people that do the corporate leasing or even, you know, elderly is here that they don't have, they are on the fixed income and $600 in their pocket, it seems that it's not a lot of money, but it is for someone that doesn't have money, like, you know, the Salvation Army family here we're talking about. So the point being here is focusing on the 30 days, I think it will bring a lot of solutions to the city and will solve a lot of problems and the complaints that the residents have. And the 30 days over, of course, you know, it's up to the city to see how much of regulation. We want to make sure it's not over-regulated to the point that pushes people out and then we cannot service or provide the service to our residents in Lewisville.
Thank you.
Mayor, I did want to clarify, so although this ban is not, we don't yet have the definition in the, in this current ban, we would be tying it. The intention is to tie it to the other regulations. So the definition of short-term rental unit means any dwelling unit or portion thereof offered to the transient public for compensation for a period of less than 30 consecutive days. So that is already the intended limitation.
All right, that concludes the requests for public comment at this time. So Councilmember Kelly?
is, that's plenty of them enforced. I don't think we need to be extra over-regulated in the industry, but at least the city know that we operating with the standards that the city wants us to operate, which is a good thing for all of us, too, because then we can separate the bad people, or the people that don't care much about the residents and the city, as opposed to the people that do the corporate leasing, or even, you know, elderly is here that they don't have, they are on the fixed income, and $600 in their pocket, it seems that it's not a lot of money, but it is, for someone that doesn't have money, like, you know, the Salvation Army family here we're talking about. So the point being here is focusing on the 30 days, I think it will bring a lot of solutions to the city, and will solve a lot of problems and the complaints that the residents have. And the 30 days over, of course, you know, it's up to the city to see how much of regulation. We want to make sure it's not over-regulated to the point that pushes people out, and then we cannot service or provide the service to our residents in Louisville.
Thank you.
Mayor, I did want to clarify. So although this ban is not, we don't yet have the definition in the, in this current ban, we would be tying it. The intention is to tie it to the other regulations. So the definition of short-term rental unit means any dwelling unit or portion thereof offered to the transient public for compensation for a period of less than 30 consecutive days. So that is already the intended limitation.
All right, that concludes the requests for public comment at this time. So Councilmember Kelly? I think we're just kind of, I'm sure there's some opinions and conversation that we might want to have here. We're still in the public hearing part.
All right. So first, I want to thank everybody who's been involved in this. It's been a long, arduous process, and this is the citizens that have shown up here week after week, meeting after meeting, on both sides. So I know this isn't easy to do, it's hard to get up and speak. I've been at the podium before trying to speak, and it's difficult. You know, our city attorney, I know you spent hours and hours and hours talking about this and research, appreciate that. City manager, Powell, thank you so much for your help. Even the people up here, we're not going to agree on this. And I really appreciate the alternate opinions that come forth in these types of, these types of discussions. It's made me think about my stance on this a little bit. So that being said, we're talking today specifically about a short, interim prohibition on short-term rentals of one year. That's what's on the table. So I've heard, we don't have that many, maybe it's not a problem yet, that the difficulty that I've seen so far in my research and going to things and reading articles, is that where cities fall short in trying to regulate is they come in after the fact. Once the short-term rentals are in place, then trying to come in and have an effect on them is very, very difficult. And I think there's probably good reasons for that. Once somebody gets in place, it's really hard to come back and then dislodge them. This is not about dislodging folks who are already there. This is for new short-term rentals. So I know a letter went out, and there's big scary 14-point font in there that said this is going to affect you if you have a short-term rental. It's not. That's not what this is about. The concept that there's just a few of them, Fredericksburg, Texas, has 25% of their homes are short-term rentals now, 1,900 homes. Didn't start off, somebody came in in one month and bought up 1,900 homes in Fredericksburg. It happened over time, it happened gradually. I don't, I don't want to live in a city where every fourth house is a short-term rental. I don't think it's appropriate for Louisville. I will say, I use short-term rentals when I travel sometimes, but it's not up to me to regulate another city. This is the city that I care about, and that's why I'm, I am in support of this more, this interim prohibition on short-term rentals. I do want to say that, you know, it's clear to me, actually, let's start with this, how many folks out there right now are for the ordinance to have interim prohibition on short-term rentals? How many favor, okay, thank you? How many oppose that ordinance? I appreciate you guys do, thank you so much for that. Somebody had mentioned the poll that we sent out. That's a data point that I had actually kind of forgot about, and went back and looked that up. So 61% of folks polled, that was 330 respondents, 61%, indicated that in their opinion, these cause problems. 73% said it should be regulated, check, we've done that, we've got ordinance on the book, those will be going into place shortly. And 54% said it should be an outright ban. So it's clear that the citizens of Louisville would prefer that short-term rentals not be in our neighborhoods. And I'm going to stop at that point and yield the floor to somebody else. Thank you.
Councilman Green?
Well, Councilman Kelly stole my thunder a little bit with the beginning of what you were saying. I did want to just say, this has been a long process, and there's been a lot of input given. I want to say, in my time, and on P&amp;Z and on council, this has been the single biggest issue that I've gotten feedback from. And so I want to thank everyone, including staff, for the time that everybody's put into this. I've spent a whole lot of time thinking about it, too, because there's not an easy answer for it. So I just wanted to kind of talk through what my thought process on all of this is, and kind of how I've come to where my decision point is going to be. You know, I, we, like I said, we've, we've seen, had over 50 people show up to speak at these meetings for these public hearings. More showed up but didn't speak. And we did have a survey with, I was looking for that number, so thank you, the 330. But honestly, with all of that, with all the emails and the ecomments and the people showing up for the public hearings, that's still less than 0.25% of the citizens of Louisville that we have gotten feedback from. So I can't take the data that I've gotten from that. I can take it for what it is and listen to both sides of the argument, but I don't feel like I can lean on that, because I just, I cannot take the feedback that we've gotten and say, I can definitively say this is what the majority of the citizens of Louisville want, because there are 134,000 of them, and I've heard from less than 500. So with that, what I'm coming to is, what are we trying to accomplish? I know what we're trying to accomplish with the ordinance, and I think most of us can agree that an ordinance of some nature is, you know, to set the rules for everybody to abide by is a very positive thing. So what I keep coming back to is, what are we trying to accomplish with a temporary prohibition, specifically for a year, is what is kind of on the table right now? What problem are we trying to solve with that? Because it's not going to solve any of the problems with any of the current STRs that are operating that are the problems. And it is a minority of them that are a problem. And from the beginning of all of this, my goal has been to address the problems. I'm not saying that a temporary prohibition on STRs is going to address any of those My biggest worry about it is that we cannot distinguish between an owner-occupied STR or a corporate STR. They're all in the same. So in a, in an economy where the cost of everything has gone through the roof, the cost of housing, everything, I don't feel like in good conscience I can say, I want to take this option off the table for someone who may own a home and need to have some type of short-term rental, to rent out a room for a weekend or two a month so that they can afford to stay in their home. I can't take that off the table for them and say, you have to hang on, you have to figure out how to hang on for a year. I just can't do that. And I think that's ultimately what, what I'm coming back with, is I just don't feel like I can take that option off the table with as many restrictions of everything else financially that is going on right now with this crazy economy. People need to have that option, in my opinion. So that's kind of where I am with the issue, and I'll yield the floor.
Councilwoman Jones?
I'll be pretty quick. I've been pretty straightforward with this from the beginning, that I support our residents who are dealing with this issue, and I think this is a tool. We have to do something. We can't do anything. We can't bury our heads in the sand, hope it goes away, and hope the problem doesn't metastasize into something greater. We've seen, we've seen what happened, and I think Councilman Kelly kind of gave a good example of what happens when we don't do anything. So I'm in support of the ordinance, plain and simple, so I won't take up much time of that.
This is hit close to home on both sides, and I want to clarify something before I get into the rest of, I actually had to write some things down. A social media post regarding my ownership of an STR was out there and brought, inferred, or brought into question the fairness and legality of my vote tonight. Yes, I owned an STR. It wasn't a brothel, it was a legal place. I used the cabin that sits on the back of my property, literally, it was literally in my backyard. The last time I leased out as an STR was in 2022. That's two years ago. Does this break my vote into question? No, legally, it does not. Now, your personal opinion may be a little bit different, but it's just that, an opinion, based on feeling and not law. What it does do, however, is give me a unique perspective. I'm able to look at being somebody that has operated an STR in the pitfalls of it, and then somebody that prefers to use an STR for various reasons when I travel, to a citizen that owns a house on a small street that actually is connected to dead, to dead-end streets. Would I want the majority of those houses there, all STRs? No. That's my opinion. I would not want the majority of those houses there, all STRs. And I've been quite candid about that. We have some, very few operators here that are absolutely horrible operators. And we have ordinances and stuff that can take care of that. We have an STR ordinance now, so it's not like we haven't done anything. And I think that the ordinance is extremely balanced. It looked at all areas. However, banning and restricting owners' rights to their property is a very slippery slope, and one that I take extremely serious. The courts have declared time and time again that property owners by right can legally lease out their property for residential use on short-term basis. It becomes dangerous when personal opinions and dislike for something start to outweigh bases in fact. And I'm not talking globally, I'm talking about Louisville, because that's what I'm charged to do. When not-in-my-backyard attitudes place the weight of opinion over property rights, the very precedent of your organization stayed in an STR. They stayed in Airbnb in November. But then comes and advocates to us about the very ills and evils that it brings to the community. Can't have your cake and eat it, too. You are the same people that you are talking about. You stay in STRs. As an elected body, we should only be legislating from a position of data and facts, not emotions and opinions. Our own numbers, our numbers, the Louisville numbers that we have discussed since July don't even come close to a cause to take such a drastic move on restrictions such as this. What's next? All concerns brought forth have been addressed in the ordinance that the council passed in January. Will the ordinance need to be tweaked and revisited? Oh, yeah. It already does. And it's going to be a document that as we move, as we grow, as things evolve, just like all the rest of our documents that we have to be revised, we're just talking about a 1988 manual, this is 2024, it needs to be revised. I feel like, like I said before, that it's a very well-balanced, well-written ordinance that takes in consideration of all involved, case law, and the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. The risk to the health, safety, and welfare, and that's what we're charged with, of the citizens because of STRs does not rise to the level, in my opinion, that warrants the need for placing a temporary ban on STRs. We should not be banning what has been found to be a right because of fear of what might happen. Our data tells us, our data, Louisville's data, tells us that what you may have seen on TV, it's not happening here. What is happening here is nuisance calls, trash, noise, parking. We haven't rolled up on one big house party, not in Louisville, that's been documented, that is fact, that's a basis in fact of our deliberating this. There has been absolutely no findings of egregious criminal or dangerous activity solely attributed to STRs in Louisville. I am not charged with Plano, I am not charged with Dallas, I am not charged with Cincinnati, I'm charged with Louisville. In my opinion, this is a complete overreach that will come back and bite us. And that genie, you can't put back in the bottle.
Councilwoman Meredith?
I'll be brief, be brief as well. I think I'm going to echo some of the same sentiments that, sentiments that Councilmember Kelly has said. I do believe that, first of all, I appreciate all the people that participated in this, from everybody, this is definitely what Louisville's about. Appreciate all the work that staff has done on this. P&amp;Z obviously went through this, I was on P&amp;Z, so I know the work that they do, looking at this. But I do think we need time to evaluate after July. I think we need time to look at this, see what happens, evaluate how the ordinance is working. I don't think we need to do this in a vacuum. Let's get, let's have time to see how this, see how this plays out. Then after one year, if we get a bunch of new STRs coming in, at least we have an ordinance, at least we have a way to plan for this. And if we need to do something else, we can do that. But I think, at this point, I think we need to have some kind of interim prohibition for this.
Councilwoman Troyer?
Thank you. As Councilmember Green indicated when she started this, this issue, I've been on council now for seven years, and this is definitely the one issue that has gotten more comment and more interest than anything else, I think, that we've been involved with. I, too, appreciate everyone who has approached, who has presented to our, to the council, has talked to us, gave us information. My problem with this interim prohibition is, how, what is the, how do we enforce, what's, can it be enforced? I mean, are we able to enforce it? What is, what's going to happen? And how do we, how do we keep track of new ones?
So the plan would be that we have a software right now that pulls data on identification. So if, if short-term rentals are being put out for rent on different platforms, the software that we subscribe to basically calls all that data and tries to identify with photos and things like cross-referencing online to come up with addresses, cross-referencing with other photos online that may be public record, and then that gives you a bunch of addresses. So we have a list that we know are short-term rentals. In fact, that's how we've been sending out a lot of our notifications to let people know. So as of the date of the ordinance adoption, if we did the prohibition, the short-term prohibition, we would basically say this is a point in time, and those are the ones that we know are operational. If we were to find out that someone outside of that list is operating, we would contact them. Obviously, we would have to do notices of violation, we'd have to give people notice and say, hey, we think you're in violation of our ordinance. And then they, we would give them an opportunity to contact us. If they had been operating already and we just didn't have them on our list, because this isn't a perfect, a perfect list, probably, we're probably going to miss a few on the front end. They can come to us, explain to us, I was operational, and if they were, we will allow them to be on the list. We'll say, thank you very much, we'll add you to the list, you get to continue. And then there's also, you know, if, if there's any investment-backed expectations as well, we would allow those as well to remain on the list. And so that's, that's part of a conversation that you're going to have. I will say that regardless of the registration process, like if we had a registration process today, or if we don't have a registration process when this ban goes into effect, and that goes into, and we start the registration in July, it's going to be the same type of process. Like it will be, like with all code enforcement, it's about like, I mean, it's just kind of trying to make sure we have all the data, having those conversations with the public and that type of thing. So that would be the plan.
Okay, so that's, that is how it would be identified. But what is, what are the, what are the penalties associated with if we find somebody is violating? in violation of this interim prohibition? What's, what sort of penalties do we have?
Liz, I don't know the ordinance, but I believe it's a $2,000, it would be $500 or $2,000 violation.
It's violation of the UDC.
UDC, okay.
I just have, I have some of the same concerns as have been, have been expressed for property rights and that sort of thing on the interim, interim prohibition. And I see problems with, I, I just see problems with enforcement is my, what I see. So anyway, that's, that's where I'm at.
Mayor, this is an important topic, so if we have to go around again, I'd like to do that real quick. So there's a couple of things here that I want to follow up on.
Sure. And Patrick, if we can just kind of keep them high level?
Yep. Keep them very high level. So I concur, the poll was a small number, but these are motivated folks. I can't help it if people are motivated to take that poll. We've been talking about this for months and months and months. We have the same motivated folks coming up over and over and over again. These are the folks that care, and these are the folks that I think the voices matters to me the most. One of the points that I left off is, what are we hoping to accomplish with, with this, interim prohibition? And that's time. There's a lot of this stuff winding through legislation. There's a lot of this stuff that says winding through, seems like a couple of years ago, and every year there's some sort of new legislation coming in from Austin. I'm looking for time. And again, once, once that genie's out of the bottle, and we get another 100 of these, 200 of these by end of next year, we can't bring those back out again. So I'm looking for time to see what kind of cases come down the pipe and what kind of other judgments we have. And a year interim prohibition gives us more time to consider that. And that's everything I have to say. Thank you.
Well, I'll give my two cents, since I'm probably going to have to anyway. For those of you who don't know, the mayor is only tasked with voting in the case of a tie. And so I guess it'd probably be important to have a conversation around that right now, because you can kind of see the lay of the land. Here's, here's where I have some conversations. You guys know I'm a huge property rights fan, have been for many, many years. But I also know that there's two sides to this property rights, right? There's the neighbor that's right next to it, and so they've got rights too. And everybody's rights work until they hit somebody else's rights. And so there's a, there's a balancing act that we have to figure out here. And that's, that's been my challenge through this entire conversation, is how do we, how do we make that work? I look at the national conversation around this and the international conversation around this. And yeah, there's some things going on that are probably going to get slapped down in the courts. They're probably not going to work. There's some other things that are going to absolutely stick. So this is not going away. There are things to, other ideas that I think are really interesting that I'd like to look in that may mitigate some of these challenges. But to the point that I think Councilmember Kelly just made, I need time. And I don't have it right now. And I can't solve the problem without time. I can't solve it to the best of my ability without a little more time to see where some of these cases shake out. So we are not impacting anybody's rights at the current moment. Everybody who has an STR gets to keep an STR. Anybody who's invested, looks to be doing an STR, they absolutely can keep moving. You heard that from the city manager. There's nothing going to stop them from doing that. Where this might impact, folks, if we do put some sort of interim prohibition in, is if they are looking to find an STR and buy that. By the same token, if I'm looking to buy a single-family home, I don't know if that's really going to impact the market all that much with the way the market is rolling right now. So for me, whether it's a six-month or a year interim prohibition, I think we need the time to just get our feet underneath us as a city and make sure that we are handling both sides of the issue as calmly and as rationally as we possibly can, and also while this winds its way through the courts. We have a state attorney general who has, is on record that these will go down in a flaming morass if they become a problem, that these types of ordinance as well. So, you know, that's, that's something we as a city have to, have to balance as well. But my, my take on this is that we would, we would be doing a disservice to the entirety of the property rights issue if we didn't just take a breather and give ourselves some time, which we've done in this city. We've done this for the north-end development of the city. Now, not in the same way, but we have done this for, for our northern gateway, where we've found ways to take a breather. There are other parts of the city in my time where we've taken those, we've used policies, procedures, tools in our toolkit to just buy a little bit of time to provide the right solution. I think we've done a pretty good job with the development in Louisville. If you take a look at what we've been doing historically, we tend to do it right. It's, it goes wrong when we don't give ourselves the time to get it right. So that's, that's where I am. Whether that's a six-month, 12-month, I'm negotiable on that conversation, but that's, that's the piece that I think we need. The thing we're solving for is, is the genie out of the bottle. What I see with other cities where they're going is, I don't, I don't need another Fredericksburg. I don't need all my lake neighborhoods turning into STRs. I don't need all my downtown neighborhoods turning into STRs here in Old Town. I need that mix. So with that, are any other comments? If none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Council, please vote. I have six in favor of closing the public hearing. Council, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Council, please vote. Oh, sorry, I need the city attorney. My apologies.
Looks like it's not working.
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending Chapter 7.2, Allowed Uses by District, of Volume 2 of the Louisville City Code, known as the Unified Development Code, by adding Section 7.2.1.5, interim prohibition on short-term rental of dwelling units, providing a repealer severability penalty and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Council, please vote. I don't have a clicky.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll just announce.
Oh, so I get to say it out loud?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got it. So I will be voting in favor, in favor of the, of the ordinance. So that would make it four to three?
Yes, sir.
In favor of a one-year interim prohibition on new STRs. That does not impact anything that is currently going on in the city. And in 12 months, that interim prohibition will be, will be reviewed and we'll have a conversation at that time.
Just to be clear, you're voting in favor of the ordinance?
I am, as presented.
As set forth in the caption.
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to say something. I would like to just thank all of the staff and the council members. Obviously, we don't all agree, but I respect every one of you and your opinions. And unlike some places, it actually has not been a bad working environment going through this. I know that this has caused civil wars, but with this group, we can say I disagree with you and go on down the road and be good.
Any other comments?
I appreciate that.
Item F, Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. The city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. We do have Daniel Law, oh, I'm sorry, that's, yeah, for Item F, here to speak. Daniel?
So my name is Daniel Law. I live on 3131-H, which is the Castle Hill on the northeast side. I want to talk about the sidewalk safety, pedestrian safety issue. So before I talk about that, right, I know the city put a big deal on the 10 minutes walking to a park, you know, green space thing, right? I think that's a really good idea, right? I think it has a lot of benefit, right? Quality of life, right? You know, lower BMI, risk of obesity, right? Healthier lifestyle mentally or physically. But if you think about right now, if 77% of the resident live within that goal, I know City of Louisville has a goal of, you know, reaching 85% by 2025 and 100% by 2035, right? So if you think about a quality metrics, is that a quality metrics for Louisville, right? What does that mean about 77%? To me, it's a 0% or maybe a 50%. What I mean by that, right? If I think about my neighborhood, right? I have a front, you know, the neighborhood is a front-facing garage neighborhood. We have a lot of traffic, right, going on, like speeding traffic issue, and then people running stop sign. And then if you think about you walking on a sidewalk, relatively, right, it's going to be more dangerous than a rail-facing residential, right? Because when you have front-facing garage, people coming in, out of the driveway, all the garage, right, you have to be more vigilant about the whole thing, right? The main issue I have is in the neighborhood of front-facing neighborhood, you're going to have a lot of people, obviously, I know for some reason, parked in the sidewalk. So every time, right, I walk the neighborhood a couple of day a time, you know, I want to go the way I want, but, you know, 50% of the time, I cannot do that because you have, you know, truck parking here, car parking here, even though they have a long driveway, but they decided to park the car in the driveway, that partially blocking the driveway or fully, the sidewalk or fully blocking the sidewalk. If you think about it, you have a sidewalk. What is next to it? You have the water meter box, right? Water meter box is under the ground. Sometimes they don't usually shut correctly, right? So if you think about me running at the nine, you know, in order to go around the neighborhood, walk around the neighborhood, right, I have to go around the car, and then what happened? I stepped into the water meter box. That would be a bad day for a lot of people, right? That's why I talk about sidewalk safety. That's really important to me. In the neighborhood, we have a lot of young parents that, you know, walking with their young children, like me. I have, you know, two years, two months old baby. We walk with this, you know, her in the stroller. Most of the time, what we have to do, we have to go around the car, and then what happened, right? If the water meter box is not shut, right, we can trip, we can fall because, you know, the wheel got stuck into it, right? So, you know, on top of, you know, I talk about people parking on the sidewalk, I mean, yeah, parking on the sidewalk, right? We have people actually blocking the sidewalk ramp. So for me, with a stroller, I couldn't go there and then go easily around the neighborhood. I have to go around the curb ramp, which you know, in Castle Hill, the curb ramp is pretty elevated. So to me, I think that's dangerous. I talked to the NRO about it. They say like, I, you know, we usually don't enforce that law. We usually don't enforce parking law. I don't know what that means, right? Because to me, that's a really, really big safety concern, because maybe he say we never enforce that because you have rail-facing neighborhood, you probably never going to have that problem, but front-facing neighborhood, different, different idea, right? And then, you know, talking about speeding, right? Our neighborhood, right, we don't have a speeding sign limit or speed limit sign. We have the speed radar, but the speed radar is calibrated to 30, 30 miles per hour. But City of Louisville, right, obviously, the default is 25 miles per hour. So I don't know if somebody can look into that to align the, the 25 miles per hour thing on the speed radar thing before they install the speed limit sign in the neighborhood. So now, one thing I want to talk about, right, you know, sidewalk safety is really important to us because, you know, that's one of the reasons I buy a house in Louisville because of the 10-minute walking to a park or the green space, right? I think it really benefit me personally. It makes me have a healthier life, but I have to deal with a lot of, you know, sidewalk issue, right? Like I say, people blocking partially or fully blocking the sidewalk, the ramp is not usable all the time, and then people speeding down the neighborhood. I think part of the reason is because we have the speed reading sign, the speed radar reading at 30 miles per hour before they say slow down. I think on top of that, right, obviously, I'm not here to talk about, you know, asking LPD to go in and enforce like a right ticket every day. What I'm here to talk about is like, how can we work together, right? Either HOA, the residential, the resident city code, and LPD working together to bring awareness, you know, partnership, right, before actual enforcement need to be done. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Law.
Thank you.
I'm sure we can get your neighborhood resource officer to come talk to you. Be a good opportunity. Item G, Consent Agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. City secretary, do we have any requests?
Yes, sir.
Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item eight, Regular Hearing. Consideration of an Ordinance of the Louisville City Council Appointing an Alternate Judge for the Municipal Court of Record Number One in the City of Louisville to a two-year term, providing repealer severability and effective date in declaring an emergency. Currently, we have three associate judges, and the municipal court judge would like to hire another associate judge to be responsible for assisting with court coverage as the presiding judge during periods of vacation, illness, or the absence of the municipal court judge. Rajesh K., Jose, Jose, Joes, I, we'll get that right somewhere, is being recommended as the additional alternate municipal judge. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Council, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
City Attorney.
Thank you, sorry. This is an ordinance of Louisville City Council appointing an alternate judge for the Municipal Court of Record, for the Municipal Court of Record Number One in the City of Louisville to a two-year term, providing repealer severability and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Council, please vote. Item passes unanimously. Reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. Councilmember Green, would you mind if we started with you?
I do not mind. I actually have nothing to report.
All right. Councilmember Jones?
Sure. I want to thank our Chin community for inviting us out. I know a few of us made it out to their National Chin Day for DFW. It was very, very fun, a lot of singing, a lot of festive activities, a lot of graduates from all over the state and outside of the state. You know, it's, one of the great things about Louisville is the inviting nature of it for people who are not from Louisville, whether you're, you're brought, you're like the Chin community were, or, you know, you, you wander into town from, from another small town by a lake in Chicago. So I've always been appreciative of the welcoming nature of this city, and I hope that we continue to do that. That's all I have.
Councilmember Kate?
Yeah, I also want to echo the same thing that Councilmember Jones said about the Chin Festival. I look forward to that event every year. It's a, it's a great event. Unfortunately, they did not have the wrestling this year, so if you have never seen that, it's pretty good. I've also got some library activities for the week. Louisville Public Library will be closed on February 21st for staff development. Kid-created scavenger hunt for tweens age nine to 12, Monday, February 19, 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. Ticket is required at the Bennett Program Room. Neighborhood Grant Workshop, Tuesday, February 20th, 6:30 to 7:30. No registration required at the Crawford Meeting Room. And Anime Makers, Anime Plus Makers Club for Teens, 13 to 18 only, Thursday, February 22nd, 6:00 to 7:30. No registration required at the Hive Maker Space. And that's all I've got.
Councilmember Troyer?
Yes, Mayor. I too want to thank the Chin community for the invitations to not only the National Day on Saturday, but also the LISD's Chin Festival on Thursday or in the evening. That Chin, the Chin festivals, if you, if you've never been to one of those, you need to, you need to attend. The dancing, the music, everything is just tremendous. And they are very appreciative of being here in Louisville, so. And besides that, I have information, there's some things going on at the Grand Theater. First of all, performances coming up. Matilda, presented by the Christian New Theater of DFW. That'll be February 23rd through the 25th and March 1st through the 3rd, with two performances on February 24th and March 3rd. A night of stand-up, a stand-up comedy, I guess, featuring Paul Vargese and Friends, presented by the City of Louisville on March 1st. And then Texas Tunes Concert Series continues with Del Castillo, presented by the City of Louisville on March 9th. And as always, Friday night acoustic jam sessions from 6:00 to 9:00, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville. Activities at the Grand, there is a, an ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan Project Meeting. We heard about that in the... We heard about that in the, in our workshop session earlier, but that will be on February 26th, presented by the city of Lewisville. Acoustic Fridays Songwriting Challenge, presented by the city of Lewisville on March 8th. And there is an exhibition going on, an art exhibition going on right now with the Lewisville High School Schools Exhibition, February 9th through the 24th, put on by the, or sponsored by the LISD. And then finally, Becoming One, The Time Is Always Right to Do What Is Right Exhibition, presented by the MLK of North Texas Committee, and that goes through March 2nd. And that's my report.
Thank you, sir. City Secretary?
No report, Mayor.
City Attorney? Richard?
No report, Mayor.
Michelle?
Mayor, city council members, park fans, just a reminder that second edition of the Roots for Wings Workshop is going to be held on March 2nd. And if you want to learn how to properly landscape your front yard with pollinatives and little bee flowers, flowers that attract bees, please register at playlewisville.com. It's been a very successful program for the city, encouraging people to go native.
I'm signed up for it.
Oh.
Me too. Excited about that, yeah.
Park fans.
Mayor, Council, Lewisville wins again. The Lewisville Lake is at 100%.
Oh, all right. They'll start dumping water any, I don't know, but they'll start dumping water here shortly.
Exactly one year ago. Yes, ma'am.
Jim?
Just wanted to tell you briefly, the Public Safety Building's going really well. There's been some minor setbacks, but things that we're working through, just normal construction stuff, but they're making great progress. And I also have some video and some pictures that I could share with you if you want me to send you a link, so.
Thank you. Chief?
Chief, we expect a report every week. That is ready now?
Councilman, they did.
Have you ever had arrests, anybody, since last week?
Yes, ma'am. I do. Zero. I made zero arrests this last week.
All right, he's fitting in already. That's good to see. Two quick things, want to...
Mayor, can I, can I go?
No, sorry. I started late, didn't I? I messed that up. Sorry about that, Patrick.
No, no report, Mayor.
Even better, even better. Two quick things. We have 8:00 a.m. Friday, the 24th. We have the Tri-City Community Gathering, so that's Capel, Flower Mountain, and Lewisville at Thrive. Encourage you, if you want to figure out how to get plugged into your community, this is a great opportunity to do that. And then if you want to learn a little bit more about the city, we have the State of the City coming up on the 27th. You can find both of these events on the city website. Both of them are great ways to learn and get plugged into your city. So I'd anticipate anybody who's interested in serving or participating in the city at any, in any level to come on out and attend both of those. With that, I don't believe we have anything else. City Manager? All right. Says there is no further action to be taken on tonight's agenda. We stand adjourned. 8:24.